Oh gracious.
Okay, City of Perkins, regular meeting Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Gene, call to order, road call and establish a quorum.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Form me in prayer, please. Dear Father in heaven, just come to you now, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, we also thank you for what this day represents. It represents that our country is free. And we're free to go vote and choose who we'd like to choose to govern our state. Father, I just pray your blessings over the election, I pray your blessings over this city and our state. Father, I pray your blessings over this commission and our city staff. We love you and we thank you for the people that you've put in place to run our city. And I pray your blessings upon them and their family. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number four, consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything you want to pull out and talk about? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Sarah?
I know, I was waiting. I even looked to you. You got my toe. Noted.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
I love it. Number six, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Item number seven, consideration discussion and possible action to release $49,800 of credit, letter of credit from Exchange Bank regarding the construction of certain Kinder Wells Section 9 sidewalk improvements by KW Investment LLC.
This is being requested to be released because those sidewalks haven't been installed.
They have been completed?
They're completed.
They're completed? And then it stated that there might be another one later when it comes time for the plat?
Well, there's another letter of credit on file. And the builders are required to install the sidewalks.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
No.
I make a motion that we release the letter of credit from Exchange Bank regarding the construction at Kinder Wells Section 9 sidewalk improvements.
One second.
Got to go.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Number eight, consideration discussion and possible action to approve planned use development, PUD, for Freedom Living Perkins LLC, located at or near Lover's Lane and Pam's Drive, as approved by the planning commission on October 13th, 2022. Staff report.
The engineers submitted plans that went through the planning commission and were approved. And I believe there's two representatives from the engineering firm and the developers here to speak to the commission.
Go ahead. State your name and... Sorry about that.
I'll follow up. Steven Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue in Stillwater. The plan before you all tonight, like Bob says, has been approved by planning commission. The changes that we've made since we were here last, we clarified the sidewalks. It's got sidewalks on the west side, the east side, and along the roads. And we've added a gate on the west side off of Karn Circle. And we still have that fire gate on the east side. So we've incorporated a lot of those comments from the last discussion we had. If there's engineering planning questions, I'm here. If there's operations questions, the developer's here.
Are the sidewalks cement or asphalt?
They're concrete.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of the plan?
No, I left it with you.
I've got the half size, we thought you guys had the full size. I've got, I've got a few.
I left it with you, Bob, at the planning commission.
Thank you very much.
I left it with you at the planning commission.
Okay.
So there's sidewalks all around?
So north is that way. I don't know if that helps. Well, I usually turn it because it makes it...
It helps.
Door and Explorer over here.
Previously, it was discussed that sidewalks would not fit. So how did you guys mitigate that?
We've extended, expanded the drives a little bit, and the sidewalks are right at the back of the curb. So as the residents park in their driveways and pull up into their garage or right up to their garage, there'll be enough room behind the car.
For the sidewalks?
For the sidewalks.
And are these rent-controlled properties?
I'll let the developer take care of operations questions.
Thank you.
Jabo Carnley, bleeding, Stillwater, 1601 Fiddler Cell Street, Stillwater. I'm the developer, owner, manager on Freedom Living Perkins. So shoot me with your questions.
Are they rent-controlled?
They are. We own and, we will own 100% of the property and rent them.
Will they be low-income?
Absolutely not. This is a higher-income property. So we build a higher-end property. We do not do any government assistance, any Section 8. They have full granite insides, they're handicap accessible, so everything's a 3O door-wide walk-in showers. Cabinets in the bar is wider, so you can get a wheelchair around if somebody needed to. So this is kind of the next step before you would maybe go an assisted living or a nursing home or transition piece. We take care of 100% of the exterior maintenance. We pay for the water, the sewer, the trash, and all exterior maintenance. So they're only responsible for electric. And if we're working on gas, but it looks like we might get gas there if we do.
So would you have someone on site, a caretaker on site, or is that just someone's...
It's not a large enough, yeah, it's not a large enough property for onsite. And then we have properties in Stillwater and Cushing, so that person will rotate.
Kind of be under an umbrella of assignment?
Yep. We use the same person, in-house person to solve our property. And we're our own property manager.
Okay. And it will be located in Stillwater? The manager?
Yes, that's where we're at. I live in Stillwater, yes ma'am. Our office is in Stillwater.
So you'll have an office there if these people needed to contact, they would contact?
Correct.
Mr. Ernst, did you have anything to add?
No.
To that? Okay. One more look see. Just to clarify, because I know what I'm saying, I already know, but I'm just clarifying. So the gate on Lover's Lane is an emergency gate?
It'll be closed.
It'll be closed?
I have a knock box on it.
Okay, and it's only for emergency vehicles, correct?
Correct.
Right? And then the gate over on Karn Circle Pam Drive is, will they have a code to get in and open? Okay. And... All right. Commissioners, any comments, thoughts?
If it snows or heisses, is it up to the owners or the renters to clear their own? Or do you guys clear it for them?
Good question. We haven't... You know, we actually talked about that. It's kind of a gray area, you know, how bad is the snow going to last? How long is it going to last? You know, in Oklahoma, the odds of us clearing streets is, you know, let's go get clearing and then eight hours later, it's all gone. So I think that's... We just have to play that. You know, if it's something that's long-term, that's going to last four, five, six days, and we need to send somebody down, we're responsible because it's not, it's private drive. So if the city's probably clearing, we're probably clearing. If the city's not clearing, people living in that community are probably not leaving if we're cleared anyways. So I think that's something that we're going to have to take into consideration.
As part of your maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, and our other properties, we have other properties and they're private as well. So our Stillwater property is private, our Palkas private, Cushing's on a city street. But we've had it for going on two years and they've never cleared in front of it yet. So I mean, I don't, you know, it's kind of, do you do it or do you not do it?
Okay. All right, I make a motion that we accept and approve. Thank you. Highlighted it. I make a motion that we approve the planned use development for Freedom Living Perkins LLC, located at or near Lover's Lane and Pam's Drive, as approved by the planning commission previously on October 13th, 2022.
One second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jason.
Yes.
Jason.
The new guy. Number nine, consideration discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 24-2022, a resolution declaring the eligibility of the City of Perkins to submit an application to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Use of Transportation Alternatives Program Fund set forth by Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act for the school sidewalk project in Perkins, Oklahoma, and authorizing the mayor to sign this application.
This is the TAF grant, Transportation Assistance Program through ODOT. We made it through Phase 1, which is where you basically suggest an idea that we'd like to apply for. They've approved that. And asked us to move into Phase 2, which is the actual application. The thought, the goal is to connect the schools with sidewalks. So start at basically Superstore Thomas and come down Thomas. We had it going down Thomas to Timberline and then connecting with the park. There may be an issue with the crossing at 7th with the wire, because there's a bridge there. That wasn't necessarily taken into account, probably like it should have been. So that would add a lot of cost. So I have a meeting, we still want to apply for the grant. I have a meeting with ODOT on Thursday in reference to another project. And I'm going to ask maybe about, instead of crossing 7th, going up 5th or 6th to Kirk Street, since those sidewalks are new, to keep costs down and things of that nature, to see if they would approve that. ODOT did come here, they looked at our plan, and when school was getting out and there were kids walking in the road, so...
Beautiful.
They notified that, or they noted that on...
So they were here when they were getting out of school?
Yeah, they noted there was kids in the street, yeah, children.
I mean, you really don't get it until you see it. And even in the mornings, over there in front of Baptist Church, and just, you...
Walking down the middle of the street.
Yes. On that hill.
If you're going that direction while there's...
So just from my notes, you want to change it from 7th Street to what?
Well, I want to talk to ODOT to see if it's permissible.
Okay.
But I want to build sidewalks from school to school.
Okay. I think it's, we've got some educators up here and parents, so we're all parents, I think it's a great idea. I'm actually excited about it. I hope and pray that it goes through. So I make a motion that we approve Resolution 24-2022.
Second.
She's on it, man. She's bad.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Special now.
I'll just go on to the next agenda. Number 10, consideration discussion and possible action to approve the engineering services agreement with, hopefully I don't say this wrong, Mischak? Mischak and Associates LLC, including work required for application for the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, American Rescue Plan Act grant funds.
This is the million-dollar grant through the Water Resources Board that would allow for replacement of water lines or sewer lines. We focused on water lines because we, most of these lines in the older part of town were put in in 1912. So there's probably some lead in the ground that we want to get mitigated and taken out of the system. So as part of this, using federal money, you have to competitively procure engineering services based on experience and qualifications and not factoring in cost. So we did that. We sent out a request for qualifications and to four or five firms, received three responses. And then we had a committee score them pursuant to the request for qualifications, and Mischak came out on top. So I'm comfortable with them and I'd like to hire them to move forward on the upper project. And the timeline is very quick. We have to head in by November 30th.
November 30th.
So, I mean, this is a fast, fast deal.
Sounds like a big undertaking.
And I'm very impressed with their packet, their proposal, and even their comparisons that they sent as well.
Yeah, and they actually came here and took pictures. I mean, these are original pictures that their engineer took when he toured town and visited with me for about an hour, asking questions. That's what put them over the top. There was another, there was another proposal that was submitted that was very strong, very similar, but it didn't have the personal. So that's kind of what pushed the extra point, basically.
That's what we're about. That's...
Yeah, it shows interest.
That's our community.
A good repertoire, based on what they put together.
I've worked with them before and it's been positive.
You have worked with them before?
I have.
They had very nice references.
Yes.
They had some strong references here from some very large cities. Again, I should have been an engineer too, by the way. Yeah, I mean, some very impressive cities and people, so...
I want to make a motion for engineering services agreement with Mischak and Associates.
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Like a gift.
Yes.
Autumn? Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Number 11, consideration discussion and possible action to determine recipients of the Strategic Planning Stakeholder Survey.
This is a, in reference to the strategic planning sessions we've been having, the facilitator came up with a survey. It's five or six questions that they want sent to our stakeholders. So the question is, who do we want to send it to?
I had a few ideas on that. And I'm just, I'm going to throw the ideas out, and then we can kind of decide which way to go from there. And again, it was brainstorming, just ideas.
It's an idea basket.
Huh?
Okay. It's an idea basket.
It's an idea basket. Little kindergarten teacher. Okay, a subcommittee, and who that would include and what is an idea. Each commissioner submit a list of what we think stakeholders, who the stakeholders should be. Maybe start with the list of the chamber members, but not to exclude our non-for-profit groups like the Ministerial Alliance, you know, for kids in community. Just because you're not making revenue doesn't mean you're not a stakeholder in our community. But I know all of you guys understand that. So that's just a few ideas I had, and I needed guidance about if we went with a subcommittee, how would that look? Who could it have? Is it just two of us and maybe someone else on another committee? So ideas, thoughts, Tammy?
I think the subcommittee was, subcommittee was my idea. But I don't, I think that given the shortness of this agenda, that you guys might really just be able to hammer it out. But if you feel like you need to think about it and come up with a list separately...
How many does, how many did they suggest we have as far as stakeholders comments?
Could be five, could be 5,000.
It's up to us.
That's why...
I just didn't know if they suggested in a certain amount, just to get a wide range of opinions. You know what I mean, like...
You know, it was mentioned at that meeting that a lot of our business holders, stakeholders, if you will, within the city do not live within the city limits. And so they really don't have much of a say-so about how things are in or happening and they're depending on us to make sure that they're listened to and heard. Does that make, did I say that right? So those... I kind of like the idea of us coming up with our own list and then bringing it together.
That's my, that's what I lean towards, like giving each of us a certain number of like five or six people, and then sending them, compiling a list.
Because I believe you offered that night for us to come up with the list and that, that as city staff, you would put it all together and mill it out.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I mean, and the list could be every resident and every chamber member. Or it could be something...
The chamber.
Yeah, or it could be the chamber, I mean, or...
Well, that was my idea, was start with the chamber and then the schools, the ministerial, all those, all those community groups that are reaching out and involved in, you know, helping make sure that we thrive and our kids have what they need. So our arrows go back to the kids. I mean, we could send one to the senior citizens group as well. But again, it's just...
See, I feel like, I mean, I think we're on the same track, but I kind of feel like if each of us presented five with an alternative of two, that way if any of us overlapped, we could put the alternatives in there. That would give us 25 different voices. Or, I mean, five is an arbitrary number. I just was thinking that way it's, you know what I mean? I don't really care one way or the other. I just was, that's kind of what I was in my head thinking.
I have a wacky...
What you got?
Wacky idea.
Put it in the basket.
Instead of us deciding for Perkins who stakeholders are, what if we gave people an opportunity to present themselves as stakeholders? It would obviously need to be a timed process. We would have to advertise it on social media, on our website, or, you know, we'd have to be available to everybody, but have those that consider themselves stakeholders contact the city and say, "I want to fill this out, and I want to give you my opinion." From there. Does that open the floodgates for us to get thousands, perhaps?
But then it's coming from us and not them. We're kind of, we're protecting them from backlash. You agree?
I like, I mean, I'm not...
Because I mean, that was your, I mean, I believe that's the original thought behind the commission selecting the stakeholders, so that we could be on the front lines for you.
Well, we don't want to have a repeat of...
Absolutely not.
I will throughout, but the last time we did, we sent it out to every resident. We did the mailing to every resident. It cost just around four grand.
And I'm not saying that we do that.
Right, I'm just providing information.
But I don't think that was beneficial. I think if we have people approach us and say, "I would like to fill out the survey."
And let me be clear, that four grand is just not postage. It's staff time and material and all.
Looking at the cost, what Commissioner Rubelo has said will help deviate that cost. You reach it out, we advertise it, and they're reaching out to us.
And they can either come in and pick out a, up a copy if they'd rather handwrite it. We could email them if they would prefer it to be emailed. There could be a link on the website for them to download, fill out, and turn it in.
When you're talking stakeholders, I think you need to clarify too, whether you're talking about individuals or entities.
I'm thinking both. I'm thinking we're considering those that consider themselves stakeholders, whether that's business owners, whether that's people that live in city limits, whether that's business owners, churches, nonprofits, organizations, people that want to have input.
Developers from citizen. That's really broad, but I mean, so is from five to 5,000.
Well, having them identify themselves might be a really great idea.
Would there, would there be an option underneath that for maybe us to invite? Or should we just, if it's on social media, we share it with certain people?
Yeah, I'd do, yeah, that'd be fine.
You may get more valuable feedback with doing it that way, because they may feel like they have a more vested interest.
They'd be motivated.
Bingo.
Don't know.
No, I think it's on to something.
I think it's a great addition to the basket.
Basket overflow.
You guys laugh, but they work.
I'm not laughing yet, I just saw.
I want you to know what staff's opinions are, combat with traffic coming through the office and does that...
But if it's on the, if it's on, if there's a link...
If you, if you post it on Facebook or advertise it and...
Couldn't we put it as a link on the Facebook or on the...
And put it back on the website, most are going to have access to it.
Correct. And they're going to want to go online.
If you identify yourself as a stakeholder.
Perhaps, that's how I shop.
I think you make it a Google form where it all, like, tore itself and...
That's where I was going with it. Can they fill that?
I don't know.
Google form and then just submit it?
And then submit it back in electronically and give you a better response that way too.
And then taking it one step further, instead of asking staff to muddle through all of it, could we schedule a meeting where we get together and muddle through the data that we've collected?
That's why I think if you made it a Google form, it would make it a lot easier, because you could...
Yeah, organize the information.
I apologize, I was talking to Racial, but if we did something like put a link on the website and had paper copies at the library, so we're trying to pick up all demographics. And then we do, that was Racial's idea.
Of course it was.
Then we do a Facebook campaign. If you consider yourself a stakeholder, and we could send it to Chamber or share it on Community Watch or whatever. If you would like to be involved in this survey, go to the Perkins, City Perkins website, click the link, scan it and email it in, or mail it in, or hand-deliver it. We can compile them and take it to the next strategic planning meeting.
I think we could save you a step though, if we make it a Google form.
I, that's fantastic. I have no idea what, how that works.
A Google form, if they just fill it out, they don't have to print it and scan it and print it. I mean, it just submits itself. It just submits itself, and then you can collate that information the way you want. So if you want to isolate it to the question one, you just get all of your responses for question one, responses for question two, responses for question three.
Can you help do that?
Vice Mayor Fo, would you be able to come in and help do that?
I would certainly try my best to help. I have done them before. Yes.
He's not here to speak for himself, so I would say he gets ready or sent to that.
Well, it would go to him.
And the other thought that I have on the, if they're coming into the library, maybe we can encourage them to use the public access library computers and just fill out the Google form instead of having to print it.
I was thinking of our older citizens.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, if they're, and I'm not saying they couldn't have an option. I'm just saying if we could encourage them to just get on there...
Maybe we could actually have the form sent to... Maybe we could actually have the form sent to EQ World, the facilitator, the results, and then if there's any paper copies, we could hand-deliver them to Mark.
Absolutely.
And, uh, that way he can look at the data.
Then it'll put it in all kinds of pretty ways to look at the information too. I mean, you can look at them and, I mean, if you're wanting to specific numbers or something, it'll put it in graphs for you, it'll-
I think it's a good idea. I think the idea basket has worked.
I think this has been a great discussion, right? I like the idea of Commissioner Rabello.
Good ideas, it blew my idea out of the water.
What was your idea?
Just getting random utility bills and military.
That's not about a idea.
Random.
I like it too. That sounds like fun.
It's not really stakeholder, but it's, uh, cool.
Yeah.
So-
I can do my best to help with that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's way over my technical.
I'll Google it.
Google, the Google form?
It is so simple. It's amazingly simple.
Google knows everything.
The idea basket, now you're gonna learn something.
Yep.
Come learn today.
It's incredibly easy.
I'm excited.
Okay, we need a-
So I think we need an action item to, uh, create a Google form and paper forms at the library and-
I make a motion to-
That's, yeah, unless they wanna change it, I, but yes, that's the survey that's in your packet.
Do we all like that?
And this, this came from Mark.
Yes.
Not us, it came from our, and then we wrote that mission down at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, this is from the facilitator, and I don't, I don't know, you need to get super, super deep in the weave with a bunch of questions.
Well, I think-
They'll give us their opinion.
Right, I, I like the brevity of it itself.
Yes, the way it wants to fill out.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big word.
Neat.
Big word at the end.
Do you like the questions? Is there something you'd like to change?
I don't. I like the questions.
Yeah, you like it?
The shorter the better, really. It, it's short to the point, they're not gonna fill it out, otherwise if it gets too long, they're gonna get bored and go on down the road.
Okay, so I make a motion to advertise the City of Perkins Stakehold Serv- Stakeholder Survey Questions on our website in the form of a Google form, and make it available on social media as well as in paper form, where it could be picked up at the library, um, or City Hall itself, in order to, I-
I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
City of Perkins Stakeholder Survey Questions on social media.
The city website. Yeah, a Google form, providing paper copies at the City of Perkins Library. In order to identify stakeholders and encourage community engagement. I made it that work.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, Tammy's not done with me yet.
I would just, I would just, at the very end, set up in order to encourage community engagement, I would say-
In order to determine-
To develop a strategic plan.
In order to develop a strategic plan. I have to reread that?
To assist the city in developing a strategic plan.
To assist the city in developing a strategic plan.
Can I ask a question?
I'll ask first.
Oh, go ahead.
Rachel gets to go first.
No, Bob gets to go first.
Is it Bob?
Is it your intent that we use Facebook to direct people to the city website to click the link?
Yes.
Okay.
A- and make it shareable?
Make the post shareable.
Okay.
I don't even know how that works.
I'm not sure how that works either.
I don't know how it works, but it needs to be that way.
My question is, do we need a deadline for responses to be returned?
Yes, we do.
And you can, uh, I was gonna say, I mean, we need to make that public too, but on the Google form, you can set a date when the last responses can come in and you can turn that off.
So, um, responses due X days after publication or-
December fifteenth. When's our next strategic planning meeting? It's in January.
It's in January?
Twenty-fifth of January.
It's twenty-fifth of January, twenty-fourth, it's the twenty-fourth of January.
I, I would leave it open for no more than two or three weeks.
I mean, I would say the latest would be December ninth. I mean, then would give us maybe an idea for this commission meeting if there was a-
If we've had a res- if we've had a good number of responses or something.
The eighth or not, is that too soon?
I will help you.
We can change that date, can't we? I mean, if we make it, if we, uh, make an action on it, we can extend it, okay, there we go.
Let's put it on, let's put it on the agenda.
For next, for next communication, we want to extend the, are, are you saying the motion would include, to, would include the date of December ninth?
Yes, so my, my motion, it, this, to continue my motion. The expiration of the stakeholder survey question will be December ninth. Does it have to be timed?
No.
And I would please direct staff to add this to the next meeting in case we would like to extend the time period.
That's not part of the motion.
No, no, right, that's why it's not written.
That was a different sentence.
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be part of the motion. We'll just do it, we'll just make sure it's on the agenda.
That was a messy motion.
It was.
Sounds like mine.
I second it.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Can I be under, I'm just gonna repeat normally. I know you can.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn? Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
Item agenda number twelve. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve rules of decorum for city commission, order of adjustment, Parks and Recreation Board, Library Board, Planning Commission, and Flood Plane Board. Staff report.
Yeah, go ahead.
Plane.
We have some rules of decorum and we were just reviewing them. There were a few little tweaks, as you can see. All of the rules of decorum for all of the boards and the commission that were reports to the city commission, so to speak, um, were exactly the same, so the same changes were made.
Like it, it should be.
So the Plaza, the Plaza Trust, Library Trust, Public Works, Potters Trust, they will adopt their own rules of decorum. As the commission, they are responsible for all of these. In this list, you would adopt them for all, on advice of our attorney.
I make a motion that, oh wait, any commissioners have any comments?
You can change this.
I, I don't think there was anything really to change. I-
I like it.
Pretty straightforward.
I do too, and I like the, looks good to me. Um, I make a motion that, uh, we approve the rules of decorum for city commission, order of adjustment, Parks and Recreation Board, Library Board, Planning Commission, and Flood Plane Board.
A second.
I like the consistency.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Item agenda thirteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve proclamation establishing November as National Runaway Prevention Month.
Yeah, come on, stand up.
Yes, ma'am.
Angie's here.
Hello. Over here.
Yeah. Set your name and address and talk to us.
Social Security and-
Name, password, number.
Hi, I'm Angie Frehney. I am the Prevention Programs Director for Pin County Youth Services. I've been there seventeen years, so have come down and done quite a few of these. Um, so November is National Runaway Prevention Month, and we're participating in some activities, um, primarily doing proclamations in Stillwater, Perkins, and Cushing. Um, we're also promoting National Green Day, which is Thursday, uh, so we have it all over our social media, uh, asking anybody who wears green that day to send us a picture. And then on the seventeenth of November at seven o'clock at the Stillwater Municipal Building, City Hall area, we're doing a candlelight vigil. Um, it's a national shine a light night, so across the whole country, the candlelight vigils and, um, businesses, houses, organizations that light up green. So, uh, for example, the top of the OSU library has lit up green every year for us, until they apparently can't do that anymore. They, I think it can only be orange now. I know. Uh, they put new lighting in or something. But other places like Cal Agency, you know, they'll be green all the way around, um, Wesley Foundation, Student Union, Hospital, different places like that. So, it's just to raise awareness, um, of the issues that runaway and homeless you face and to try to, um, help guide them home. So, we provide a lot of services for kids in crisis. Um, we run the emergency youth shelter in Pin County. We have lots of prevention programs, counseling, and then we also go into all secondary schools throughout Pin County. So we have a counselor that comes to, to the high school here in Perkins and the middle school every week. Um, Safe Place Program, Perkins has always been a big supporter of Safe Place, um, where young people can go if they're in crisis and come to the youth shelter. Um, I guess I should maybe make a little announcement about that. We, uh, temporarily are closing the shelter until November twenty-fifth. This is something I was gonna tell Bob for sure, due to shortage of staff. I know. It's a twenty-four-seven facility, we have to have two staff members, all shifts, and, uh, we just lost a lot of people. So we just had a few kids at the time, so we're trying to kinda regroup a little bit. Uh, so in the meantime, we will have someone on call twenty-four-seven, um, and get it opened back up as soon as possible. I don't, I think this may be the first time we've ever done this in fifty years. So it's tough. Uh, but the staff, yeah, the hiring situation is really hard right now. You have to, you know, do all your background checks, everything takes weeks to try to hire someone. But it's a wonderful program and, um, Perkins has always been really big supporters of it with the fire department, police department, the school, City Hall, Perkins Drug, you know, I'm missing somewhere.
What do we do in the event a kid woke safe place?
You can go ahead and call our crisis, twenty-four-seven crisis. We're probably gonna be referring things to the DHS hotline just during this short period of time. Um, and, and it just asks DHS to help, especially if it's an immediate issue.
Sure.
DHS may come out pretty quickly to do an investigation. And then there are shelters in Ponca, Guthrie, Enid. It's just, you know, everybody's having a lot of the same issues that we are right now, but we'll get her back and going very soon.
I sure appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
I, I, I bet it's breaking your heart that you're having to put a pause on it.
We tried everything not to. I mean, we were going out working ourselves. Our executive director would work, what, midnight to eight, with all her stuff. Um, I worked Sunday, you know, so-and-so worked Saturday. We literally were trying not to close up, but-
You're one blessed man to have you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
She knows my husband.
We, we went to high school together.
I know y'all have stories about each other too.
Probably so. So, um, again, thank you for what you do. Any, any comments?
Amazing service.
Thank you, thank you.
I know you have a tough job and you got, truly have a heart for what you do, cause as, as educators, I, I understand that. You take them home with you.
Oh, yeah, for sure. We almost did, literally.
I can see that. I, I make a motion to approve the proclamation establishing November as National Runaway Pre- Prevention Month here in Perkins, Oklahoma.
A second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Angie, would you like a photo with the mayor?
Yes, please.
Turn the camera off.
Thank you. Okay.
Was everybody would like it?
Yeah.
No, I'll pass. This is the mayor's.
It's the mayor's deal.
Yeah.
Do you take one too?
Yes.
That way. It's based that way.
It's so nice to finally meet you.
You too. Bob.
Here, just a second. I gotta get a few more, hang on.
You didn't get the boot in there, did you? So much.
You too.
Punch me in the arm. Oh, oh, I'd love to do that, thank you. Give me my hug.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Good evening.
All y'all. I got all y'all.
Item agenda, mm-hmm, Christmas cold. Item agenda fourteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust, one open appointed trustee position with term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Nothing received that I'm aware of.
Trying to choose my words, so I'll let Sarah choose them for me.
I, I wonder if when the stakeholder survey goes out, if maybe it won't spark some interest in the community and we might get more responses.
It's a great idea. Maybe we'll get the stakeholder survey responses and then we can call people and ask them if they would like to work on the things that they've brought up in their survey.
It does, it does feel like sometimes that, um, people might just need an invitation to step forward.
What, how else could we invite them?
I, no, I'm just saying, I, I agree with what you're saying. I just feel like maybe that's it right there, is invite somebody.
Yes, and we've got a weak ass heel for you.
I know Bob wants to see this, it's, it's a trust, so it's there, but I know he wants to take it beyond Red Bud, do other things besides just Red Bud. And, uh, I feel like we need a full, complete team for you to be able to, to step forward, and as that you might offer that. Anybody else? I, I say, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Fowth. Might be an opportunity for that, that survey for us, after the fact, to reach out to people. So, we pass that?
Just take no action.
No action and pass that to the-
Yep.
Uh, number fifteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Library Board, one open trustee position with term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Ernst, did you receive any after the, the deadline? Cause there was one person interested in it, I don't think they've sent it in yet.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we have to wait till the next commission meeting for that, if I, if that person will finally?
Yeah.
They're interested, they're just involved in starting a new job and new position.
That's fine, yeah.
And very interested in it, uh, has offered help with the city before, but-
Yeah, we'll just keep it on the agenda and-
So no action for today?
And, right, and they could reach out to, also reach out to the librarian-
Okay.
If they had more questions or-
All right. Um, is it okay if they reach out to Commissioner Fowth as well?
Well, yeah.
Okay. All right. I will direct that person to you, ma'am. All right. Agenda item number sixteen. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
New business.
New business. Number seventeen. I make a motion we adjourn.
I second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Otherwise, it's too risky.
It's, it's like any of teachers mean, don't talk. Okay. Consent agenda.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Sorry, not sorry. Okay, do we do? PBWA first or?
Typically.
Okay, I just wanna, that's how the order I had. I just wanna make sure. Okay. Jean, are you ready? Call to order, real call, and establish a quorum.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Is that it? All right, number two. Consideration, action on consent agenda. Commissioners, did you have anything that you wanted to discuss? Outside of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Square?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase of Kubota Excavator U Series. U twenty-five dash four R one from Great Plains Kubota at a cost of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Utilizing capital improvement sales tax funds as included in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three capital improvement plan.
This is an expense that was budgeted for. The budget was approved. Thirty-five thousand budgeted. The cost is coming in at thirty-three, two eighty-seven, sixty-five. By state bid or, or another competitive bidding equivalent. We would recommend approval. This is a mini excavator, so it's a smaller, we have the backhoe, and this would allow to get into smaller, tighter places. It's lighter and. Finer digging. You can get closer to things.
Make a motion to approve the Kubota Excavator U Series.
I second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve rules of decorum for Perkins Public Works Authority meetings. Tammy, you did a good job.
I, I really.
Those two ladies do it.
I know you showed my, my comment.
Right.
And I think my, my comment was, I, doesn't matter to me. They did all the work on that.
Thank you, ladies.
Good job.
That's very clear and concise. It's not muddled, and I like it, so. Commissioners, any comments? All right. I, I make a motion that we approve the rules of decorum for the Perkins Public Works Authority meetings.
I'll wait a second.
Members, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Speak on its office right there. Sorry about that. Should've took a drink of wine and slowed it down. Number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. Authorizing application for American Rescue Plan Act AR, ARPA grant from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board.
This would approve us applying. The grant will need to be submitted prior to the next meeting.
ASAP, right?
Or application.
This is one of the ones that has to be done ASAP?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two authorizing application for American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, grant from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Item agenda number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act Grant Verification Form. Naming Chair Carla Cummings as authorized representative.
This was a requirement of the grant for federal money to approve this verification form, so the chair of the authority can sign.
Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the Oklahoma Water Resource Board American Rescue Plan Act Grant Verification Form. Naming Chair Carla Cummings as authorized representative.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Sorry, that yes wasn't as animated as I was expecting. Item agenda number.
You just understand.
I'm getting there, Sarah. Thank you. Number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the Engineering Services Agreement with MeShak and Associates LLC. Including work required for application for the Oklahoma Water Resources Board American Rescue Plan Act Grant Funds.
We did this on both meetings because it may get into both, like, streets or under the city general fund, water and sewers under public work, so this'll just cover us all the way across the board. Same agreement, same thing.
Right, it's one contract. And both entities, the city and the authority, are named as parties to the contract.
Right.
One party, but yeah, but you both, both entities have to approve it.
Right, it even clarifies it on the agreement, like, city. Okay. Very extensive contract.
I read that. We, I got that yesterday morning.
We're rolling. We don't have time to sit around.
I got that yesterday morning.
I make a motion to approve the Engineering Services Agreement with MeShak and Associates.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Item agenda number ten. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have been reasonably foreseen. Prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. No new business? I make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting of the Perkins Public Works Authority.
I second.
I love it when you do that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Here you go, Renee. Just what you've been waiting for. We're so glad you're here. Do we need to bring coffee next time? Or buy you gas? Yeah.
Those are fighting words.
I hear you.
She's not gonna share with us.
Sarah took the whole plate home last time.
I ate it in my driveway.
Oh my word.
Like, you hungry for dinner? No, thank you.
Oh my Atlanta. Okay, Jean, are you ready, ma'am?
Yes ma'am.
The Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting. Number one, call to order, real call, and establish a quorum.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Look at you. All right, consideration and action on consent agenda. Basically, it's the approval of minutes and. Trustees. Any, Renee or any commissioners have any?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn? Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not want to interrupt you. Number four. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members. Are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda.
That about gave me a heart attack.
Me reading number four or the?
No, the radio. I don't know why, but it.
Is that what you just said?
Yes.
No action on four? Number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve rules of decorum for Perkins Industrial Development Authority meetings. Which? There it is. Commissioners or Renee, is that it? Anybody have any comments on the decorum? Are we all good with it? Basically, verbatim, and I love the consistency. So, I make a motion to approve the rules of decorum for Perkins Industrial Development Authority meetings.
Oh, second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Next time, Renee, you should join us at the table down there. So you could get in on the seconds.
We'll get you a chair right there.
Yep.
There's cookies.
I'll remind you.
Okay. Number six. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen. Prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. No. I'm going to repeat that sentence in my sleep probably tonight. Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn the.
A second.
Perkins Industrial Development.
She's done talking. There's no emotion on the table. No emotion or motion.
I can't even.
Trying to beat her. You're gonna have to start over if I have a good shot at it, okay?
He's just entertained, that's all he is. He's over there going, I love watching these women try to get through this meeting. I make a motion, I didn't, I didn't finish my motion.
Nope.
I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting.
I second.
She bowed.
She bowed.
You haven't.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
I took it.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
And ready.
Jason and Justin. Bless your hearts.